Okay, it's 11 o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag. Okay, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Approval of minutes from the March 23 meeting.
Change you guys can speak.
Yes, sorry.
So having bigger.
Yeah, okay. So approval of the minutes of the March 23 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Second.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion or recommendations for changes? Okay, all approved.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Approved unanimously. President's remarks. I just have a few things I'd like to say first. Thank you all for being here, both virtually and in person. And thank you to the staff who sort of set up the meeting and are here to support it. I want to apologize for the punishingly long meeting we had last month and state my commitment to not have a repeat of that, although my colleague Doug Parks tells me that I may have won or possibly lost the award for the longest meeting on record. Depending upon your perspective. So to support my commitment to keep the meetings within a reasonable timeframe, I'm going to engage in agenda management, which means keeping the agenda at a level that would be appropriate for a reasonable length of meeting. And secondly, I've assigned our Assistant Association Secretary Linda Martin as timekeeper, and I have given her a little bell when remarks reach the five-minute mark. She will be able to ring that little bell to alert us that time is up and we'll move on to the next speaker. We'll see how this works, and if that approach works for all, I will continue to institute that practice in future meetings. Also, I've asked my colleagues to be mindful of time in our discussions and to try to avoid redundancy and unnecessary repetition during discussions. I also today wanted to alert you to the fact that John's Public Works Department will soon be opening the yard for loose debris such as leaves and rims and for yard debris that is brought in paper bags, plastic bags will not be accepted. I also wanted to alert you to the referendum ballot that will come to your mailbox this week, hopefully. This referendum gives the opportunity for you to vote on bylaws revisions. The board supports these revisions and urge you to vote in favor of each one. The changes were crafted to clear up inconsistencies and lack of clarity in our existing bylaws and to protect us from future litigation. The ballots are due back by 4:00 p.m. on May 19. Okay, that ends President's remarks. Announcement of email votes, Josette.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. On 3/29, it was, we had had an email actually going around that we had done some via emails with the directors, and we've had, did a proposed motion at the last meeting. I'd like to share that with you. It was held on 4/20, and the motion stood as to approve the spending of $46,396.5 for installation of the North Gate light at the Capitol, by the Capital Tri-State Company instead of spend $42,000 with Denny Electric as approved. Well, forgive me, I should have gone the other way. So, no, that's it, sorry. This was to allow the general manager to use the now the lowest bidder, Capital Tri-State Electric, for the North Gate light replacement instead of Denny Electric due to the change in pricing. Forgive me, I was correct by saying the other one, I should have read it first. It was that we had approved via email the installation of these lights by North Gate Lights by Capital Tri-State Electric instead to spend the 48 originally bid for the project and approved by email vote on 3/29. This was allowed to allow the general contractor to complete a contract with Capital Tri-State Electric for the North Gate light replacement at a cost of $46,396.5 instead of the original bid of $48,4979. The background is the cost of the North Gate light replacement project quoted by Capital Tri-State Electric, and it was approved in a prior email motion went down. This motion will approve the spending, spending the new lower amount. And this was passed unanimously by all directors.
Okay, thank you, Josette.
Thank you.
GM report, John.
Okay. Thank you, Collette. I just start off with the front page there. There's a beautiful picture, which will soon be a painting that'll be in the lobby of this beautiful clubhouse. So just give you some preview of it. Turn the page. Okay, so as usual, this is the agenda of initiatives and everything that your team, our team has and that we're working on. So let me start off with the pickleball courts, give you an update on that. So as you know, from the last board meeting, the board approved the pickleball courts, the new pickleball courts, and we have a signed contract with the contractor. We're working with him now on logistics and when he'll come in. We've also reached out, and this is the reason for this update here, is that it's been brought to my attention by the pickleball community as well as seeing it, but the cracks on the courts have gotten bigger and they need to be addressed from a safety issue and certainly a maintenance. So with that, we reached out to several contractors. I received back two bids as well as several contractors that opted not to bid either because they couldn't because of the environment, COVID, lack of labor, whatever. So we are coming forward. I'll talk about it in the request, but I do have a bid from the contractor. Staff recommended the same one that's doing the new courts, so I'll talk more about that later. All right, so you can see up there in the top left where the new courts are. It's kind of on an angle there, right above the platform tennis. Turn the page. All right, so again, another update. Again, we've been talking about the Rec Pier and Kayak launch. The board asked me to look into that. I have a team on it. We do have a proposed site. We are working on receiving permits. We have some estimates. We have a diagram of what it's going to look like, a picture. We have one of the committees working with us on that. So we met with the state onsite on 4/6 to review the proposed plans, meaning to determine what was needed from county and state to ensure that the project complies with all specifications. So the team is working on it. You can see the date in anticipation is fall 2023. So just an update there. And there's a lot of interest in it. Turn the page. All right, so something new. I haven't spoken about this. I might have mentioned it, but one of the things I talked about probably three, four years ago, it's something someone I know that's been in Ocean Pines a long time has told me about. At one time, I guess we had some type of boat service going back and forth. The property we own in Ocean City and the yacht club are somewhere in Ocean Pines. So as you know, we are building the new T docks. I'll talk a little bit about that. But in anticipation of that, and as well as the docks we have now, water taxi service, some of you may be familiar, OC Bay Hopper, we are in discussions with them. Actually, I believe we have an agreement that they will be coming in. They will perform a service. We will update, we will communicate this, we're working on it. But we have some points out there that we're talking about. This service will go from several points, some of them being Secrets, Harborside, 118 Street in Ocean City, and there'll be three stops and three pickups with the yacht club. So those are some of the estimated times right now and some of the cost. We're looking at something around $15 for a trip or maybe $25 for a round trip. So you'll be able to go to the yacht club, have some drinks, do whatever, and then go over to Secrets or Harborside and then come back and vice versa. Some people from Ocean City with the great venue we have there as far as bands on Friday and Saturday nights, we anticipate and we will advertise along with this company to get people to come to the yacht club. Ralph and I have spoken extensively on this, and there's a lot of excitement on both sides. So also I have on here the T docks. I have been updating everybody that we would have them in for Memorial Day. What came across this past week, we received an email from the supplier in Florida, and there were follow-up discussions, but they can, the supplier that's building these T docks cannot get certain material that's on back order, which then will affect it. So you can see the new date. The new date is, we're looking at June 2022. So we're looking about a month, month and a half pushed out. Construction costs still basically the same. We are working with the company that's going to install it to make sure, to ensure that they're ready and available when we do receive them. So we do have somebody on this. We do have somebody working on it. And in the meantime, even if I don't have these new T docks, we have spots where this taxi will pull up. Working with Ron Fisher on that and Debbie. Turn the page. Okay, so landscaping, I'm just going to brush over this. I've updated you on before, but on the left, I believe you have the pictures of the beautiful cherry trees that were in blossom the last couple of weeks along the paths at the South Gate. We're also putting them in the North Gate side, and then on the right, the board had task me to go forward to get the palm trees, which we have ordered, and they will be in mid-May at a cost of around 10 grand. So that will be back to normal pre-COVID. Turn the page. Linda, Linda's going to jump in and talk to you about the next several topics.
Okay, bulkheads. We're near completion on the 2022 bulkhead project. We're doing the backfill. It should be done probably this week. As far as the 2023 bulkhead project, it's supposed to begin in September pending the permits, and that will include North Penn Tail Drive and Penn Tail Park. As far as dredging, we will be dredging the current locations from, that we just got approval from MDE on. They will be hopefully performed in July with the following to be done as soon as we get the permits from MDE and the county for the applications that were submitted in 2020. Next page. This is the picture of a current mailbox repair. The mailbox was damaged over the weekend. Public Works went in and re-welded. The mailbox was a clean cut, so there was no issues of replacing the pedestal. Next page. Mailboxes. We have gotten the cluster boxes. We have narrowed them down that we need at least 11 mailboxes to be replaced. The mailboxes, three of them are high priority, and we did find out that they now have to perform to the four-seat regulations, so they will not be the square boxes, it will be the rectangle boxes. As far as pedestals, we have narrowed it down to 59 pedestals that need replacing with 13 as high priority. We are trying to get at least two of the pedestals that came in, two of them to be replaced. We just have to coordinate with the post office on the replacement. And the cleaning of the mailboxes, we did do a test site on Sandy Hook, and it was a great success. It did clean off a lot of the debris, tape, dirt, so we're going to continue with the other mailboxes and should be done probably, I would say, in the next few months.
Thank you. Linda, let me just over it on. So one of the things also that we do, and I have Public Works, a few people there or any person working on, was we're trying to get an estimate on what it would cost to build pavilions or some type of overhang on these clusters or these sites and to get an estimate just so I can present that to the board, because I believe I was tasked on getting that information. So right now, we have estimates. We think it'll be like 30,000, 40,000, but we are working on that. And keep in mind, everything today is increasing and it's, you know, material and everything right now is a rough time to do something like that. So and the other thing on the mailbox, it just seems to me that just each weekend, there seems to be one that's coming down somewhere. We are working on that, but I've noticed that's a little different than what I've seen in the past. We're trying to order the pedestals. We're working on that, but like anything else with COVID, getting supplies is a challenge. Turn the page.
CPI violations. In March, we initiated 15 new violations. We closed out 17. The total violations, the legal are 86 currently open, 58 are illegal, waiting court dates. Next slide. Work orders for March, 112 new work orders were given in March with 81 closed out. Majority are in drainage, so the drainage work orders do increase. We do have 20 in grounds and landscape and 14 in roads, four in bulkhead, and 41 in general maintenance. That includes any of the amenities. Next slide.
Okay, thank you, Linda. So just a couple of pictures. Pictures sometimes tell you more than me. Going to a couple of bullet points. Debbie Doniu with Nobie Vialanti has worked with an outside contractor that we hired to get our ball fields in order. It's probably the best they've been in years. When you talk about what Frank has mentioned about deferred maintenance, there's a lot of work that went in there that Debbie and that team worked with to fix that had been arrived for several years. So the irrigation, everything else, the ball fields itself, all up to speed and definitely, I know Debbie's very happy about it, and I'm excited about it also. It's just another example of where the team, the entire place, us, whatever, we've taken something that hasn't exactly been up to speed for years and years and years, and we've gotten it there. Turn the page. Okay, so North Star, we've heard a lot about North Star. It's kind of been a roller coaster for me and the team, but I have some, second month in a row, I believe I have some good news on where we are tracking with this. So and, you know, we have, it's the entire team and obviously Keith, the Keith that's here today, he is now in charge of the video and the audio, doing a great job on this whole process. He is working on this. He goes through this every day. He has his reports. Definitely getting efficiencies now. One of the good things is now we've just started the online payments. To me, that's one of the first times that I'm actually going to see some efficiencies and savings. So we're excited about that. So far, so good. This schedule here, just one of the examples, it's something I'm accustomed to from the worlds I've come from, but we track all of the tickets, and you can see now where they've come down. And I believe as of now, we're somewhere around five open tickets, somewhere in that neighborhood, give or take. But the good thing is, unlike what's happened in the past, so far, it's been sustainable. And that's the big part. So right now, I got to be honest with you, this is the best I've felt about it, not without a lot of pain, not a lot of, without a lot of phone calls specifically from me, but I believe this team, our team, has done a really good job on this. Turn the page. Okay, so just some highlights, the camps and Debbie's here and everything is. Wreckin' Parks, again, when we show you the numbers, the numbers are very good. Obviously, Wreckin' Parks with a lot of favorability, bringing in better revenue. And again, it's not a major revenue generator, but certainly we're seeing a lot of favorability there. Her camps and all her other programs are on track and seem to be getting back, we're hopeful, pre-COVID. Golf and golf maintenance, what can I say, outside of if you want to look out the window if you're in this room, this golf course, every month, I can tell you, is the best it's been since I've been down here for 12, 15 years and continues. They just did a iteration. It was very successful as opposed to other years. Getting positive results from Justin and John. The numbers for golf, which I'll talk about later, will substantiate having a very good golf course and what that means. Aquatics, I don't know what else to say, but the lady down there is doing, the whole team is doing an excellent job. I mean, if anything with COVID, what gets affected was the aquatics. They've done a great job. They have challenges. We still have challenges as far as hiring lifeguards, just like everywhere else. But she is committed to and that team is committed to giving the same service and as much as we can, like we did in the last two years with COVID. Food and beverage, numbers are better than last year and continue to improve. You'll see that when we give the financials, but a lot of good things in food and beverage. The audit, Steve will probably be here next month and a month after. He'll talk about the audit, but we're starting the year-end audit with our auditing firm. So far, so good. Personnel, just want to touch on this a little bit, and obviously, we're closing out the year, the fiscal year. It's probably been one of the best years ever, at least that's what I'm reading and definitely what I'm seeing. As I've mentioned every month, our team is responsible for that, as well as the board and as well as everybody else. But I just, at this point, I just want to say, we need to take care of our team, and I've been saying that. And the landscape is changing. In the past, let's just take even one draw, like the accounting position. Your competition, what I had to benchmark and what were the challenges was basically what was down the road, which always was down the road. Today it's different. Today, with everything that we've even gone through, with, you know, virtual work, working from home and whatever, and we saw this, we lost a very good person. They can work from home, they can work for a company out in Pennsylvania or somewhere else. So I'm just giving one example where we have to relook at in certain positions or what we pay those individuals. I am doing that. It is still part of the Simpson-Seigel study that we did two, three years ago. I have reached out to them, what I call, "light," and I'm just trying to take care and balance out for certain positions that I know that we're at risk of losing some very good people that I don't want to lose. So I am doing that. I'm trying to keep it within the basis of all the budgets. I believe I'm doing that and even for next year's budget. Okay? That's it. Turn the page. Financials. Turn the page. Linda will talk to you about the, she'll talk to you about the monthly financials, and then I'll talk to you year-to-date. You can do that one.
Okay. We finished the month of March favorable 500, 1,500, 1.576. Consistent with previous months in golf operations and yacht club. Turn the page. The nut operating ended in March with a favorability of 158,000 due to the increased revenues, which was consistent with all other months, and favorability of the revenue again in golf and food and beverage and expenses, decrease in expenses in aquatics.
Let me just jump in. Thank you, Linda. So let me just jump in. 124,000 under revenues increasing. Efficiencies, management and expenses. And look, sometimes the expenses went down over the year because we had to shut down programs because of COVID, because whether we didn't have lifeguards or whatever. There's two sides to that. I, we, us, we lose revenue, but we also sometimes, sometimes the expenses go down. So that's all in that mix, but overall, it's management from this team of expenses throughout the year, throughout the last three years, and I can tell you that, more efficient and effective. On the revenue side, she mentioned golf, food and beverage. We did receive some money from, some favorability on the money we received from the county on roads and some right-of-way fees. So all of that is even in the year-to-date, but that ties out that 124. Turn the page, and I'll talk about year-to-date. All right, so let me just, on the year-to-date, I can start with this one if it's fine. So again, I've been through these numbers. They're just building up. It's basically the same explanations I've been giving you all year. I mean, if I was to break down this million six, talking seven, eight, 900,000, 900,000 for amenities, it's a big number. Hopefully, it will continue throughout into next year and the year and the year after that. I believe we fixed a lot of the structure, the management. I mean, obviously, the Matwatt Company, they continue to do a great job. Now our golf course is doing that. Our racket sports will. Now that we're giving them a product that they can sell, that they can manage, they certainly are showing that with the results, and you'll see more with the racket sports as we go on. Aquatics, you know, we haven't put in infrastructure there as much or deferred maintenance. That place has been pretty much maintained well over the years, but as far from a management situation, what's going on down there as far as effective management of expenses and all this organic growth and revenue that has come in, it's truly, it gets me excited. The police, there have been some open positions. I mean, there's turnover. Look, we've had this for years and years and years. It's probably going to continue. The BICS winds up that we have some favorability because of the open positions. Wreckin' Parks, again, it's a mix in the sense that, you know, when we had to shut down programs because of COVID, some of those programs, we were generating more expense than revenue. So that is in there. There is management of expenses that are more favorable, and there is some revenue growth in there. I have to say, compliments. It's a Wreckin' Parks department. She has brought, they have brought that expense number down continuously over the three years, four years that I've been doing this. Beach parking, I mean, we all know about beach parking. It's the best deal in the world, and it will continue to be. Marinas, obviously, next year, this coming season, we probably will have some challenges. That team, like every other team we have, have worked through those challenges, and I'm sure we will again. Beach Club, again, food and beverage, the racket sports, that's turned the corner, that's starting to make money. Public Works, general maintenance, CPI, there's a lot of different things in there. Some of it is the accounting entry between the two years that we've already covered. There's some grant money in there. There's some other favorability in there. We have right-of-way fees, favorability. We have the Affordable Care Act in there. With bad debt, we have some favorability there in the sense that we're seeing that we don't need as much bad debt reserve as we believe two, three years ago, so that's a big part of it also. And then what I mentioned, it's what I'll call timing on an accounting entity. All righty, turn the page. I figured we went through that one. Turn the page. All right, Chris, quick, I don't want to have time. So on this one, this is a very important schedule. I want to talk about the detail on the next page, but this, we put this in there. We have monitored this since I've been here to ensure that we have the proper reserves and that we forecast for it. You see on the next page. Turn the page. You can see that Steve does a forecast for me, for us, that's invaluable. This ties into that five-year summary that I have, that we have for our reserves, that we can see if we're within that 22% to 28%, which we are, that we've agreed upon as an association on how much we would have in reserves. This is more to see where we are in the expenditures. We're pretty much on track. These are all expenditures that have been approved. I do have some timing in the sense that, for instance, right off the bat, the vehicles that we ordered, we haven't received them, they're on back order, but we are tracking everything, and you can see where we're spending money in reserves. The bulkheads, the waterways, 1.6, I've explained that over the year. The roads, what we're going to do there. So this is what pops out to me. The roads with the 5,000 balance projected at 430, 2022, well, we have committed to increasing that balance in there, right? With BNF and DMA to try to get it up to $1 million. So we have infusions going in at the beginning of the year. We have 350,000 that we talked about taking, that the board approved, that I recommended to move from the favorability. That'll happen May 1st, as well as the $450,000 from the casino money. That's all part of the budget. So that number will grow. That's the one that popped out to me, and I just wanted to highlight to everybody. That will go up to 800,000, and if we continue on the three miles of 300,000, you can see we're building that up. And obviously, with this favorability, I'll come forward to this board and recommend that also. That's it. Turn the page.
Thank you, John and Linda. My treasurer's report, Larry.
Yeah, turn the page. Okay, through March, sorry, latter end, are approximately 27%. Through March 31st, we had approximately 13.9 million attached to that 5,300 million some pieces in SEDAR and 8.3 billion in money mark in our operating accounts.
Thank you, Larry. Public comments? Members wishing to make public comments in the room will go first. Please state your name and address, and time limit for comments is five minutes. Paula?
Well, you could bore my timer here.
So please come up to the microphone.
My name is Paul DeGray. I live at 88 Windjammer in Ocean Pines, and I'm a full-time resident. First, before anything, I want to say a thank you to the bylaws committee to assure them that any questions people have of them is not a reflection on their hard work. Having to put together something where you can't tear it down to zero and start over again is one of the most difficult things anyone can do, whether it's a building or a project. They were assigned to be able to try to go in and satisfy things. And that goes into my first question. What's the ridiculous rush? The current bylaws, however antiquated, have been in place for many years, and albeit they are not at all functional. A general consensus, however, in a lot of the consensus, however, in a lot of the people in the pines, is that unless more details or question answered times are, that there will be an across-the-board no, and that would be unfair to all the work that has gone into this. We have had, to the best of my knowledge, for the public, one 8:00 AM meeting and one town hall meeting that was more of a lecture event. And that, most people out here have found off-putting, to say the least. Generalized responses from the board seems to be that it's printed, available to be read. That's that. Move on. The attorney, the Ocean Pines attorney, has been quoted in local papers advising the board members, and thank him, to make certain to differentiate between their personal views and those of the board. And that is a nice thing to do, except when they're quoted in the printed word, that information sometimes gets left off. Would it be not much easier, while the ballots are out, and may be much more responsible to the residents here, to have some open town halls, the library, the golf course, the deck of the yacht club, and perhaps invite the bylaws committee, so that they could explain how they ended up there, and one or two of the board members could explain why they feel it's so necessary. Right now, the consensus seems to be, we're being asked to buy a truck without looking under the hood. Now that segues into the next question. Why is the board not giving serious consideration to the nationally known fact that the post office is a mess, and postal delivery worse? When we had ballots that went out before, three years ago, for example, it was asked, why couldn't we just put a line in with the ballots that says, if you haven't mailed it by X days, take, give it consideration to put it in a drop box? The response was, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. That never made sense then. It makes less sense now. Three years later, it's still the problem. Our ballots have instructions on the color of ink, whatnot to do, where not to mark. Would it be impossible, not an instruction, not a requirement, but an added line to call attention to the state of our postal service? Especially since 258 votes were received in the last election that were not counted, because they were late. If you save two votes in each of those envelopes, that's 516 votes that were not counted, which would have had one heck of, which could have had one impact on the election. Even the IRS allows for postmarks. The answer is, it's not in our bylaws. We've changed a lot of things on various boards over the six years I've been here permanently. A temporary change, we're considering using e-voting next year. Why not just put that little message in there, get your vote in on time? And finally, there are a lot of comments and interruptions against people, and not against, it's a bad word, who have taken the time to attend in whatever form is necessary. The five minutes given is just that given. Since these statements are never questions and answers are not expected, why do we have to have these interruptions by certain board members? Seems like all of the time. We don't need that. Like a general board, excuse me, I'm going to sneeze. We would all like to see a board general manager site. For example, I went into oceanpines today.org, and it says that on the 30th of this month, as of this morning, we're counting the referendum. Hasn't been changed out there. Doesn't say a referendum for what? So I said, well, I'm, that's what we're going to do. The idea that you could put your minutes there, that you could put your individual meetings there, and that would be at one place that someone here could, coming in, could look. No, not everyone has Facebook. No, I can't because of my clearances. I have to be really careful. And so a lot of people, a lot of people just don't like it. Consider that. It's not an insult. It doesn't mean they're stupid. It just means they would like one place to go. And finally, we need to just stop with the dissension that we all hear about. I go to the library, and people say, what happened in the funny farm again? That's a quote, okay? And that's not good for us. You all represent 8,500 homes. What's happening is you're only being seen out there by what goes wrong. You're not being seen by what goes right. And if you try to lower down personality conflicts, it seemed to be popping up. It would be a lot better for all of us. We're out here. We don't care. You got elected. That's fine. But knock it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula. I want to stay safe to all of them. Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Joe?
Yeah, Joe Reynolds, 84, Watertown Road. I saw my hearing problem. I turned the meeting on, on my phone with Zoom. I can hear you all perfectly now, and my hearing is perfect.
Okay.
I can even hear myself twice. You mentioned kayak launch and boat ramp.
Yes, sir.
We're going to build a boat ramp in Penn Tail Park?
Okay, so in Penn Tail Park is where the site is for the recommended, the old crabbing pier or recreation pier with a kayak launch, yes. That's what the committee came forward with, and that's, the board has asked me to review where to put it, yes. That's what we're looking at.
Okay, but we're not putting a boat ramp there.
No, sir.
Okay, that's what you had up there. You said boat ramp.
Oh, then if I did, I meant kayak launch, and it's a wrecked pier.
It's a kayak launch, not a boat ramp.
Sorry.
The water taxi, that's been talked about a lot over the years. I would be very careful about that. Watch everything closely. It could end up costing us. People go over and park at the yacht club, get a water taxi, go over to Ocean City, spend their money. Now, I know we think we're going to get loads of people coming from Ocean City to the yacht club, but I think that's questionable, probably at best. I would watch that very carefully. I don't know how you would judge what's going on, but potentially, it could cost us a lot of money.
We'll watch it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else in the room? Josh, do we have anybody virtually with their hand up?
I don't have any hands up or anything in the chat right now.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comments. Purchase request, John?
Yes. Page. Josh, can you put it up there?
Yes, one second.
Okay, so we have two requests. I'll handle one. I'll handle this one. I mentioned when I was talking about the initiatives, the courts that are there, if you look at them, the way we defined them and described them, the two in the back, which turns out to be eight pickleball courts, and then there's two fronted at, which we call tennis courts, that can be also used for pickleball. There were cracks there, there are cracks that, definitely from safety side, and have gotten bigger. So I'm coming forward, requesting authorization to go forward with staff recommendation of $55,260 for ATC Corporation to come in and to fix the cracks. I've detailed exactly what they will be doing in my updates. I believe this is the best way to do it. I've spoken to the leaders of pickleball. In fact, I was down there the other day, talking to several of them, went through everything that we were going to do there. They're in agreement with it. We will have to shut down the courts for several days. They're in agreement with that. Debbie will work with them to ensure that everybody understands that. So again, requesting authorization, $55,260 to go forward with this for the cracks.
So this is a new spend?
Correct.
And it'll come out of this year's budget?
So this is an unbudgeted spend, that you could collect. This is an unbudgeted spend. It's not in this year's budget nor next year's. What I've come forward and requesting is that we pay for this, kind of like what we did with the T-Docs last year. We ordered them, and I said, once we realize at the end of the year, the favorability, we'll use that to pay for the T-Docs, and we allocated that at the end of the year. I'm asking for the same here. I have about $1,007,000 in favorability, $1,006,000. I'm asking that we hold off, I'm not going to pay for this thing until probably after May, that I pay it out of the favor, charge the favorability, yes, with a reclass. I'm asking for permission on that also.
Is there a motion to approve this spend?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this spend is approved.
Thank you. Turn page. Okay, Linda will handle the banquet chairs.
Okay, request an authorization to go forward with staff recommendation of $20,547.68 for Chavari Chair Company. This was amount for the upcoming fiscal year. It was included and approved with, along with the miscellaneous yacht club equipment, kitchen equipment. This was part of that approval.
So this is the, this is below the budgeted amount in the lowest
Yes.
cost and this staff recommendation.
Staff recommended, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this spend?
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this spend is approved. violations, none. New business, first reading, additions for resolution, MO9, attachment. And this is the candidate registration form, and the motion that will be considered is to revise attachment, beat resolution, MO9, candidate registration form, such that all questions in section two of the form are identified as optional. Excuse me, the motion paperwork says section three. That's an error. It's section two. Section three is already optional. So the purpose and effect is to remove confusion about the necessity to respond to the questions in section two of the recently revised candidate registration form. And the background is that in the bylaws and resolutions submitted their proposal for revision of this form, there was acknowledgement that some of the questions in section two were not directly related to the current requirements for candidate eligibility as set forth in the OPA bylaws. The position was that those questions would be of potential interest to voters, and on that basis were of value. There was no intention that answering these questions would be a requirement for a candidate's application to be considered. The form that was approved did not indicate this. The proposed motion that will be under consideration corrects that and removes any confusion about the necessity for candidates to answer the questions in section two. Any discussion, comments? Okay, this, there's a special meeting scheduled for Friday to do the second reading and have the vote to approve these changes. The timeliness of this was encouraged by our attorney, who said that this section as currently written is inconsistent with our bylaws. And so in order to have a form that he can approve and that we as a board can approve, he wanted that corrected. And so the meeting on Friday will be at 9:00 AM, and it is a virtual meeting. If you're interested in attending, it's already posted on the website. Thank you. No other new business appointments. We have two appointments to consider. Gary Murray is, has been endorsed by the Architectural Review Committee. I believe this is their final vacancy for an alternate position. The endorsement by the chair states that Mr. Murray brings a desire to serve and previous board and ARC experience with familiarity with the process. This was also endorsed by the liaison committee. All in favor of approval of this appointment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second appointment is Jenny Cropper Rhine. This is a reappointment. It will be her sixth term. There are no other applicants seeking a position on the Communications Advisory Committee. And so this is being endorsed by the chairperson for our consideration based on Ms. Cropper Rhine's previous service and contributions to that committee. Joseph Wheatley, the liaison, also endorsed this application. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of this appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so both appointments are approved. The next regular meeting, board meeting, will be May 25th, Wednesday at 11:00 AM. It will also be hybrid, and it will be physically held in this room. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment at 11:45.
45.
Thank you, everyone.